Okay, Ms. Marcy, go for it.
All right, we need a vote to approve the minutes.
All right, did everybody get to look at the minutes?
Yes.
Yeah, they looked fine to me, Lauren. Anybody have any problems or issues?
Nope.
All right.
Nope. All right. Move to accept motions as read, as written?
Motion to approve.
Somebody second?
I made the motion.
All right.
Motion to approve by Ann.
Yep. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good, thank you, okay. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so the first thing on the agenda is fines for the rest of the fiscal year. OCLN extended due dates until June 30th, so this is kind of a moot point. We can, at June meetings, talk about the next fiscal year if you guys are good, or if you want to make some sort of claim now, that's fine as well.
You said it's till the end of June?
I haven't heard anything yet about what OCLN's gonna do after the, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so no, the directors wanted some sort of consensus through the network that we weren't gonna charge fines, and then they extended everyone's due dates until June 30th. Now, I don't know if they're gonna change that because we're starting the opening process, but I think because it's so close anyways, like we're six weeks out of that, I think they're probably just gonna leave it. So, there's gonna be no fines for the rest of the fiscal year. So, I don't need you guys to vote on it, just more of an awareness of that's what's gonna happen.
And then we can talk about it in the, at the June meeting.
Right, going for July. Yeah, so I'm gonna skip the fees for the rest of the fiscal year because some of this may be moot anyways, once we start hitting the reopening of the library. Changes to state aid due to COVID. The state aid, we have three mandatory things that have to happen in order for us to get state aid for next year. One of them is we have to meet a certain number of hours. Second one is we have to spend a certain amount of money. And the third is we have to get a certain amount of money from the town every year in our fiscal budget. So, we got what we needed for last year, so it will be all set. And they lack, they reduced the, whatever money we had spent in March back to July is the amount of money that you needed to spend. So, we're all set with that, and we don't need to be open anymore hours. So, however we do our hours open from now until the end of June, we're all set. So, we don't have to worry about it, which gives us some flexibility of if we want to limit to seniors because we really, in a perfect world, we wouldn't only let seniors into the library for an hour. Like, we'd let everyone in regardless of who they are. Or if we want to say only, no unattended children, then we have that kind of play. After July 1st, they may come out with some more standards that say you can still continue to limit, but after July 1st, we kind of have to play by the state's rules on that.
Right.
Again, they may change that. They didn't change the, what's called the municipal appropriation amount for next year, and we're gonna talk about that in the budget, which is next. I'm a little disappointed that they didn't change that because there are a lot of towns that just don't have the money this year.
Right.
Because of, of, you know, sales tax, excise tax, meals tax. A lot of, a lot of them are telling people that they don't have to, you know, pay their taxes right away.
Right.
And so those interest fees that they're used to getting, they're not gonna see those either. So, there's that. So, that's kind of where we are for state aid.
Okay.
So, for the budget next year, I sent you guys the, the budget.
Yeah.
And we've been going back and forth about this budget for a while. The newest thing right now is Frank has asked that every, everyone take a no salary increase, and the employees are fine with that, so that is, that is good. Ever it creates a problem with hitting our state certification number by taking out those raises. So, I, there's two columns at the end. There's the one that's labeled state certification, and it's basically we've upped the expense line to 43,264, which puts us less than the 2019 number, but it gives us an 18% increase from last year. And Frank did say that there are some of the selectmen and the finance committee that are not pleased that that line jumps that much, but that puts us right at the 435,968 that we need for certification.
Okay, all right.
We could just level fund everything, and then, and then we're gonna be short by about $8,000 for municipal appropriation. Now, we can always apply for a waiver, and chances are everyone's gonna be applying for waivers, and maybe they'll come back with some further guidance once they, they see how many people are applying for waivers.
I would hope so. I would hope that that would make a difference.
Right.
So, do you need us to say yea or nay about a particular line here?
I think we, we should, like, I should, like, give these numbers to Frank on the student side because the town meeting is June 22nd, and say, this is what we're doing.
Okay.
Only problem with the, getting the state certification number is that we're going to end up having to defend that on town meeting floor. And it could be fine, it could sail right through, they could question other things. The fire department had already negotiated their raises, so they have raises that they're gonna either completely ignore, or they're going to argue on town meeting floor that they need raises.
Okay.
So, but chances of them asking for raises and getting them are probably better than us asking for raises, and even our one line that's jumping 18%.
Right.
You said the other, all the other town employees opted for no raises?
Yeah, other than the school, and we don't, the school was, so we, all the other town employees were at the end of a contract. The school had one more year in their contract. And I, I don't, like, we don't know what, what's going on with them for raises. And Frank's always been like, well, we don't get to see theirs, so that's that.
So, have the policemen, I mean, the firemen, signed their contract?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, it's pending town meeting approval, but... So, I don't know how the town meeting is gonna go.
Yeah.
I would, I would go for this, I would go for the state certification budget, and you've got nothing to lose by going for it, and if it doesn't...
Right.
You're only talking about the expense line, you've given up everything else, and when you...
Right, I mean, I could, the only thing I didn't run was I could up the utilities line. So, instead of it, one line being at 18%, I could do 10% in both of those, or like nine and nine. But I, I don't think, we need more money in the expense line. The utility line is, is pretty good. Like, I haven't run out money, I haven't run out of money in the utility line yet.
Good, that's good. I think we just go for it. I mean, if it passes, and, and, Anne's right, we haven't got anything to lose at this point.
Right.
How does everybody else feel?
I agree, I think we should go for the state certification.
I have it written. I do too.
Okay.
Yeah.
What about you, Michael? All right.
Can you hear me?
Hello?
I've been cutting in and out too, though, Sue.
Yeah, I know, me too.
Sometimes I can hear you, and sometimes I can't.
I know, I know, it all cuts out.
All right, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Michael, you, are you, can you hear us? Mike, nod your head if you hear us.
I don't think you can.
Are you playing with your computer there? Mike, up or down? Can you hear us, Mike?
I don't think so.
There is a chat function.
You can't hear, no hear?
Um, so he could chat if he had a problem.
Budget, this one or this one?
He probably just has it on in the background, and he's gone off.
You can't hear us?
He can't hear us, all right. He's not muted, right? No, he's not muted?
No, and I just, like, unmuted him and muted him, like, muted him and unmuted him so that, because Lauren and I were talking at the beginning, and we're having trouble.
Yeah. But sometimes I fade out, all of a sudden I can't hear anybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, me too.
Okay.
Me too, yeah. It's just that, if everything's unstable, so, right. Let's assume that Michael's good with this, and we'll go with it, Marcy, okay?
Okay, sounds good.
The state certification. Do we need a vote on it? Do you need to vote up per se?
Sure, if you guys wanna...
Somebody wanna make the, um, motion to vote on it?
I, um, I make a motion to accept the state certification budget.
Thank you.
Seconded?
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, Marcy.
Yes, all right, um, so, I had to with OCLN approve our, our membership dues, and when we, when I signed up to approve our membership dues, there's a couple of things that the network buys for us that we had to approve and/or cancel. And so, there are three things: Novelist, Library Aware, and Libro. Libro was this trial that we were doing on, it allowed you to network your computer with, with an Alexa so that you could look up your library cards and like, but it was, they never got it up and running, so I opted to change that.
You canceled it, right?
Yeah, so I canceled Libro. Novelist is something that lives in the online catalog, and it has a component online as well that allows readers advisory. It's really robust, the staff loves it. It's really good for, like, someone comes up and says, I want to read a happy story that ends with no unicorns, then it, you know, it's great. It, like, you just type in some keywords, and it brings up a whole list of stories and books, and then you can limit it by age appropriate. So, we opted to renew Novelist, and Library Aware is the same parent program, but it lets library users make flyers, and they have, like, all the book covers. So, I don't know if any of you follow us on Facebook, but there was a couple of posts that we did with Library Aware that really had, like, it had, like, all the librarians are reading, and had, like, kids' books that the librarians are recommending. And that was all just, like, click and post on Facebook, less than five minutes. It took me more time to ask the librarians what they were reading than it did for me to create the, the graphic. So, they're about $500 apiece, so I did offer to up those, and I had to say yes or no, like, I had less than a week. So, just thought I'd let you guys know.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
I did talk to Sue about this, but we increased our hoopla borrows from four to five because I didn't want to decrease them, like, I didn't want to up them to, like, 10, and then after this is all over, drop it back down to four. So, we're gonna keep it at five. Cool collection, I want to say over a thousand titles of things that you wouldn't use your borrow every month for. So, it's kind of like a freebie for the patrons. So, they've done some really great things with that. Stephanie and I purchased a bunch of overdrive books, so we've been pretty much blowing through the state aid, buying overdrive materials because that's the only thing people have access to.
Right.
So, just letting you guys know how I've been spending money.
I am back on.
We hear you, Michael.
Anne, I saw you doing hand gestures, and I didn't know what any of that meant. But I appreciate it.
Michael, we were talking about the budget, and whether or not we would go for the state certification or level funding, and we voted for state certification, okay?
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Marcy.
Okay, so, reopening the library. I'm gonna, I sent you all my, my plan with the stages. We're at stage one, and we're hoping to go to stage two. Stage two is opening the book drop and having curbside pickup. However, I got a call from Frank today saying, um, that may not happen. So, Frank, um, the health agent, Alexis, and...
Tim Grinow.
Bob Curran, and maybe the fire chief are gonna come to the library Friday at 10 to kind of go through what our plan is, to see if it's okay.
Well, I think we're in, like, a state of emergency, so I think they have to kind of, like, give it their okay, kind of like the elections, they're kind of doing that same thing with that.
Right, and it's fine, and I don't, like, and I think the more people that say this is okay, the better I will feel, and every, and the staff will feel.
Absolutely, I agree, yeah.
So, Sue offered that slight arm pulling for me to come also to that meeting.
Yeah, I'm gonna go.
Can't hear you, Sue. Sue, we can't hear you.
No, I can't wait to do this in person.
That's our hunting dream.
Can't hear Sue. Sue's going with Marcy on Friday, though. Yeah.
Oh, here she comes.
Yeah, oh, good.
Okay.
There's a couple of things we need to talk about, about reopening the library. I sent you guys the Plexiglas, and if any of you had strong opinions, or whatever just works, then I will tell the Bob Curran whatever works, and whatever amount of glass you can get that covers the staff, that protects the staff, then that's great.
That's what I said, I said to Marcy too. I think just go pick whatever works best for you and the staff.
Right, yeah. The, the one from Canton is similar to what they have at Doo Balls, though. I mean, the plain glass.
I kind of, I kind of like the one that's suspended from the ceiling, just in case, you know, we wake up one day in a perfect world where there's no more COVID, and we don't need Plexiglas anymore.
Agreed.
But if it's easier and more cost-effective for the building department to put something that attaches to the desk, I think that's okay, too.
Yeah, the one in Abington attaches to the desk, and it's, they, they'll come back and take it down when we don't need it anymore. So, I assume that's what yours will be, too.
Right.
Yeah. And probably...
I think it looks a lot nicer without the metal, but again, it's whatever's cost-effective.
Exactly.
Right, and... Yeah, and we're not paying for any of this, which...
Right.
I'm kind of shocked by is that the town has a separate line for all COVID expenses. So, even the gloves and masks and wipes, the fire chief is getting through his supplier, and then he's submitting receipts, and then the state is reimbursing all the towns.
Right, yeah.
So...
That's good, so, I don't think we have a lot of argument, whatever they feel works best.
Right, right. So, when I meet with, with Bob on Friday, I will kind of convey that the trustees said, whatever kind of works best, it'll play nice.
Good.
But you feel the most comfortable with, and Marcy, whatever you and the, the staff feels most comfortable with.
Right, like, I've, I've seen some fails where they have Plexiglas on either side of the computer, but not right above the computer, which I don't understand how that happens.
Right. Yeah, I think, whatever works best.
Right, so one of the big questions is how long do we quarantine items? The CDC has done numerous tests and some other independent research labs, and for books, they're saying mostly 24 hours. It would really be for books, they're saying someone would have to sneeze on something, hand it to someone else, they would have to touch what was just sneezed on, and then touch, like, their mouth or eyes.
Yeah.
So, for the most part, 24 hours for books should be fine. They still haven't come up with a good answer for media, for like, the CDs and the DVDs that are getting returned. So, my thought process is, and Todd, the cleaner, said he would come in and he could spray the, the materials, but I'd want to have him do it once and see, like, make sure they're not damaged. My understanding is it's a really fine mist.
Yes, yes. We had that mist sprayed at the Abington library, so I don't think it should hurt them, but I think trying it out would be a good idea.
Right, so my plan is to use the community room mostly for quarantining the items, and spread them out on a table, have Todd come in and spray them. The next day, I put them on a cart, and then the following day, I'd have staff check them in and use a book drop check-in.
Yep. Or do fine free, whichever, yeah.
Yeah. And then, you know, really alert the patrons that just because you return something on Monday, it's not gonna get checked in until Wednesday. We haven't locked your item.
I wouldn't even say how many, what day, I would just say in a few days.
Right, and then maybe for the media, I might check those in, make sure everything's there, and put them in in-process so that they don't recirc and, like, leave them for maybe a week or two. You know, barring... Yeah.
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
Yeah, I know, it's a crazy thing, you don't know.
Right.
Okay.
So, that's kind of where we're at for while we're in the curbside and drop-off stage. When we are allowed to open, I imagine there's going to be something from the governor that's gonna say how many people you let in the building, how long they can be in the building, what does that look like? Really, we're gonna have to really, I really want to encourage people not to linger for that first, that stage, I think it's stage two for the reopening of Massachusetts, and what that looks like. So, Mary and I today went around the adult room and tipped over all the furniture and put the chairs up on the tables to really just discourage, and I would, I probably have about four or five computers that are open to the public.
Think you want to do that, Anne?
Yeah, because we can do two by the circ desk, and we can do two over by the windows.
Okay, okay.
And I, and I think I'd limit, I'm probably wouldn't even do one in the kids' room.
No, I don't think...
I think you're just encouraging kids to play Fortnite, I hate to be ageist about this, but you're just encouraging kids to play Fortnite all summer, and it's gonna be whoever first gets there for an hour.
Are we going, are, is the plan to let children, to open up the children's room, or keep that closed?
So, I want, I want to move all the furniture out of the kids' room, and it's just gonna be for browsing.
Yep.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, it's up, it's up to you guys whether we limit how, like, we can change our unattended children's policy and up that to 16. So, we really say, you gotta have a parent with you. When we do do that first stage, when we're saying only so many people in the building, we can really, we can do what the grocery stores are saying by, like, one person per family. I know that really inhibits, um, single parents.
Yeah, this is a lot of...
But we're not gonna stop people at the door and say, only one of you can come in.
No, no.
I know some parents are gonna have to bring their, like, two-year-old in because they don't have anyone else to watch them.
Right.
Well, yeah, I don't think we should let children wander through that children's area by themselves.
No, and like, a lot of the libraries are talking... A lot of libraries are talking about closing the stacks and only letting staff in the stacks. That is also another option we can look at, like, we can put caution tape up. My only concern is we don't have a large staff.
Yep.
So, you're gonna have a hard time watching everybody.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. I think we all need to think about things, and hopefully by our June meeting, we'll have some more help from the governor and, you know, be able to put our heads together and figure out what we want to do, because there's a lot of stuff there that we're just kind of don't know what to do with.
And I feel like we need to do curbside as soon as the Board of Health gives us blessing, and I'm, I'm fine with that. I think we've, we've got it kind of, we're all set. There's probably gonna be some snafus that are gonna come up, and we're just gonna have to roll with it. We're gonna do it on a, by appointment-only basis. We're gonna encourage people to call when they get to the parking lot so that we can bring their stuff out to them. We're not gonna leave a table full of library materials unattended. Staff's gonna step back, they're gonna come out. So, really discourage people from hanging out, and that, like, you know, five families are all at the table chatting, like, I really, that's not how this is gonna play out.
No.
That, that sounds very good. My question is, so if you're, if you're calling ahead, that means the, that would be like an online download or whatever. You're not gonna be exchanging a library card? I won't have to give you the library card?
No, it may go back and forth with that, but I think for the most part, it won't be.
Okay.
I think it would be smarter to not have anybody taking cards. Just check the books out to them, right, Marcy, and take them out?
Right, I'd check them out in the building. And especially if they're not due at this point till the end of June, there's no problem with them staying on their record for a couple of days.
Right.
You know, like, if they don't show up, then they have to come back and...
Right.
So, we're thinking about 10 to 2 for at least the beginning of the curbside and see how that plays out, and still having a couple of hours at the end of the day for staff to figure something out, like, if they have to pull some more holds or clean.
Yeah. Yeah, that'll be good.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
And if you want to make it longer, after, you know, after you've done it for a while, you can certainly, you can certainly...
Right, like, if we can look at one night or something.
Yeah, I was wondering if you were gonna bring up a night.
Yeah, I think nights are gonna be hard for a while. I'm not sure if you want to have people in the building.
No, and I think for the most part, people aren't, a lot of people aren't working from home. Like, a lot of people are working from home, so asking them to come and pick up things from 10 to 2, I don't think there's gonna be a lot of people that are gonna be like, oh, I just can't get there then. And if they do say they can't get there, then I think we can drop books off to them.
Oh, all right.
Okay, good.
Yeah, we've been doing delivery, yeah, yeah, yeah. I think that's a good, a good thing. Do you have any, do you have any volunteers that would, aren't elderly that would be able to deliver things for you, Marcy?
Yeah, we do have a few volunteers, and there's a few that have been clamoring because they're the senior tax payment, and they haven't reached their 100 hours yet.
Okay.
And I guess Frank at the selectmen's meeting, the last selectmen's meeting they had, he was wanting to disband that because people, supposedly, his reasoning is because people don't meet their 100 hours, or they meet their 100 hours and then they don't volunteer anymore for the rest of the year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, they'd be not...
I'm concerned about letting... I'm concerned about letting seniors in the building. Like, I'd be more comfortable handing them a bag and having them drop something off on someone's porch.
Right, right. You don't want anybody in the building.
If they were willing.
No.
Like, it's just one more person that's gonna be in the building touching things.
Right.
And also, these are, for the most part, older people, they're in the, that high-risk category.
So, you don't have anybody...
And I know they're, they are clamoring, but...
I don't think that...
I would think if you had the books in a bag with the person's name and who's ever delivering, they should just open up their trunk, you put the bag in the trunk. So, if they had two, maybe, or three people, you're not in contact with them either, so it's just the bag.
Right.
Yeah, I wouldn't let anybody in the building. I would take stuff out and leave it on the front walk or something for the volunteers.
Right. Well, and if I know like Holly or Julie are coming, like I can put it out on the table that we're doing the...
Yep.
Yep, curbside.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Or I can have them open the back of their cars and...
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's something to consider. So, someone offered to sanitize materials, and I was like, I don't even want staff sanitizing materials, like I just wanna set it aside.
Right, right. I know, it's a lot of turkey stuff.
Right, and there's gonna be a point when we do reopen that we have to figure out wording that says, we've missed you, but we really need to limit communication right now so that we can let everyone in the building. And even if there isn't a line, like we don't want you guys hanging out, unfortunately.
No, no. It's gotta be come in, get what you need, and leave again, kinda thing, yeah. Yeah, I would agree. That wording's gonna be kinda tricky.
Right, because, and like, we have a lot of people that see this as a community gathering spot, which is great and wonderful, and I enjoy that, but...
Not right now.
Not right now, no.
No. Okay.
Thank you, Marcy, for sending us that, all that information, the one from the doctor who's also the librarian. That was very helpful.
Yeah.
He was so practical. That was the whole thing I loved about it. He kinda calmed me, believe it or not.
Right, that's what most of the staff has said that's seen it.
He seemed to have his head on his shoulders, so to speak, you know, and we did things in a very practical way. But yet telling you, you know, this is serious, but this is the protocol. If you follow it, then everything should seem to be okay, you know, but you have to adhere to the rules.
Right.
Marcy, on that thing, on, one of the things that I think it was the, you know, the stages?
Yeah.
Yeah, about the face masks?
Yeah.
I think the wording on that, I think it should say, unless the town lists the ordinance. The way it was stated about having face masks, I don't think it was definitive enough. Of course, now, of course, now I can't find it.
Is it stage three, where patrons strongly advised to wear masks when entering buildings?
Strongly advised, yeah, definitely. Yeah, I don't think it's...
So, it's on stage three for patrons?
Yep.
Well, if the town, the town right now has said that everyone entering a public, any building has to have a mask, so I don't know what's gonna happen by stage three, whether that's gonna still be a requirement or not. If it is, then...
Then it's a moot point. They're gonna have to.
Right.
Right. No, and I asked, because I emailed the fire chief about having masks and gloves for staff. I mean, I, like, I have my own personal mask. I have a couple of them. But I, and I assume everyone else, like, has masks that they've been using to go to the grocery store and whatnot, but I, I did say, like, as an employer, we should provide masks for, for our employees. And I said, do we also have enough for patrons to come into the building if they're like, oh, I don't have my mask on me? And the fire chief's like, nope, you just turn them away. But, okay.
And that's what a lot of, a lot of places in town have the sign. If you don't have your mask on, you can't come in. End of story.
No.
And I... Personal responsibility.
That's right, exactly. You've gotta take some...
No, and this isn't, this isn't new. This has been over a month now, right, that you need to have a mask on, so...
People are just gonna have to deal with it. I mean, you, you can't go into any place without one, so... Michael, do we know when the town hall's gonna open to the public?
Nope. We don't have any more information on that.
Okay.
Because my only concern is I don't want town hall to be open and then us...
Correct.
Not.
Right, right, right.
Like, and I'm fine with, I'm fine with waiting until we get Plexiglas to let the patrons in, and I know most of the town hall departments have the Plexiglas, so I understand where there could be some lag. But the state has also said, like, you can't close the library to save money and have everything else in the town open.
Right. It's gonna be all or nothing.
Right.
Right, right, okay. Okay. All right, what else you got, kid?
At the point where we start letting patrons in, I assume they're gonna want to print things and fax things and copy things.
Okay.
Some staff have decided they don't, they're hesitant about taking people's dirty money.
Oh.
Well, I...
Yeah, and we have gloves, and I could definitely, I could charge, I could put the fee on their library card, if they have a library card, and say, you can pay us later when this comes down a little bit. I, I told staff, I could, like, you could, if someone's handing you like a fistful of, like, correct change, you could have them put it in the jar, and then at the end of the week, we could just get into the register.
Yeah, you could do that. You could, because you could say you have to have exact change or else you couldn't do it, but that seems pretty much.
Right. I mean, we can, I, I think there's going to be staff that is going to be willing to do certain things and staff that are gonna be uncomfortable with doing certain things. And I don't wanna create this cast of, well, Ellie doesn't have to put the books outside, but she's taking the phone calls and pulling holds. Marcy's the only one that can like take money in, so if I'm off that day, no one can take money. Like, and I understand, like, as director and someone who's not the union, like, it is going to be my job to sanitize the high-touch stuff, like, every hour.
Right.
Once we're open to the patrons. I would appreciate if some of them would be willing to do that, but I understand that some of them are gonna be like, it's not in my job description, I'm not doing that.
How do you feel about not charging for printing and copying through the end of the fiscal year?
That's my question to you guys.
Yeah. I, I don't, I think that's fine. I think you wait and then you see how things are going, and in our June meeting, we can talk about July 1st.
Well, and also, it may be a kind of moot point because phase two, at this point, isn't starting for the state until mid-June.
At least.
At least. They've said three weeks from, like, the 25th.
Or, or longer, yeah, yeah.
Or longer, depending on spiking or whatever they decide.
Speaking for myself, I would just, sorry. I was gonna say, I would just suggest they wake up.
Not be open.
Right, yeah. I mean, and we'll have gloves available.
Right.
I mean, like, I think my only question with this, my only question with this is that the town is really short on...
Right.
Funny right now for us to be like, we don't need your money.
Right, exactly. The optics aren't very good.
No, and we do need that money.
I think we should still charge for it, and the recommendations that you made already, you know, for whoever's working, they could put it on the counter, put it on their library card, use gloves. Those all sound like good solutions to me, you know, and then put the coin in a jar, away from anything if you want. I, I don't think that is as big a concern, the money, you know, the, it's more face-to-face than hand-to-hand.
Right, right, yeah. And I mean, if we do curbside and people ask us, email us and ask them to print something out, I don't mind not charging that, like just putting it in their bag to take, because we've done that a few times while we've been closed.
Yep.
Where people have called and said, I need to print out my unemployment forms.
Yeah.
Would rather just, here's your print, here's our goodwill, and then hopefully they'll donate to us at a later date.
Right, right. That's fine. If you think that you can work it out with your staff, go for it.
But I think, once they're back in the building, we really should either, like, set something up so that people can pay us, so we don't open again and...
Yep.
So...
That's fine, that's fine. Go for it.
To be on your, on your library card, that sounds like the best alternative to me.
Yeah.
Not everybody has a card, so, but still.
It's a good way to get them to get a card.
Yeah, yeah, but tell them to have a card and, you know, it kind of eases the transaction.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, there are that, that group of people that come in and just do printing, and they never do anything, and never take anything out, so...
Really? Yeah, well, in that case, you have to, well, you know your clientele, so...
Right.
Is Kathy?
I'm here.
Okay, I didn't, it keeps flashing, it keeps flashing that you're talking, but I didn't hear anything, so it's, okay.
Yeah, and it even flashes when I'm on mute, so I don't understand that. I actually have a, just a little detailed question. When you talk about, about bags, you know, something is gonna be in their bag, should we actually have a supply of bags, or...
So, we do. We, a publisher gave us like a hundred, like, of those reusable totes. So, we started using up those with kind of the, we don't want these back.
Right, okay.
And then, like, we do have some plastic bags from, like, people give us their, you know, their 30 or 50 grocery, plastic grocery bags, so we have those as well.
Okay.
One, like, so my plan is to continue doing like the nine to four that we've been doing on stage one with the staff. And once we do curbside and book drop, depending on what Frank and the health agent come back to, that, like, because right now, staff's been doing one to two days a week, and they've been working from home the rest of the time. We may have to, we may have to change that, what that looks like. And they may have to all come back, and if they all have to come back, then that's just how it is. And especially if town hall opens to the public and they're all fully staffed, then that's just how it's gonna be. But at some point, we may still kind of be, once we open to the public, I don't know if we wanna resume normal hours, or we wanna look at doing like 10 to 6 or something like that. And I don't know if that's something, again, we wanna wait for the June meeting and just continue to do this 9 to 4:30.
We need to think about that and also see what happens in the next couple of weeks, and then we can talk about it in June. I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
I don't know if you're gonna wanna be open all four nights. I, I don't know what you're gonna do, so...
Right, and we are, I mean, we're down Tyler anyways.
Right. And do we know if there's a hiring freeze? Will you be able to fill that position?
I don't know. I mean, I did, I, as soon as Tyler said he was leaving, I had fully intended to zero his, like, not zero his line, but not give him a raise, or give that person a raise.
Right.
So...
Yeah, so that, that's gonna be another question, is if there'll be a hiring freeze or not.
Yep.
Right.
We don't know yet either, so...
No, I knew the collector's office, someone was retiring, I wanna say Sherry.
Nope.
No, it was, it was Michelle, yeah.
And so, Mary Beth was trying to convince Frank to be able to do phone interviews, and Frank wasn't really receptive to that.
Yeah, so even if they don't have a hiring freeze, you're not gonna be able to hire somebody right now anyway.
No, and I, I mean, I'd rather, like, you know, unless it's someone that's out of state, I'd rather at least get them in the building to see what, what they're doing.
Right. Well, that's gonna just have to sort of wait and see and see what happens this, the next few weeks.
Right, I think that's gonna be for June meeting, like, for the town meeting.
Yes.
And Marcy, it's gonna be interesting too, because school, quote, officially will be closing in a few weeks. And all those people will be looking for another avenue, or the parents will be looking for another avenue, you know, so we have a lot to consider with that too, you know.
Right.
We don't want all those kids in the building hanging out all day long.
Right, no, no.
No, so that's gonna be kind of tough.
And if the pool isn't gonna be open, rec department, you know, that's, that's gonna be another whole avenue that we're gonna have to kind of look at too.
Yeah, and how much is the rec department gonna be able to do?
Yeah. But those, the children will be looking and the parents will be looking for something, you know?
Yeah, I know, but they're not gonna be able to use the library, so...
No, I know, yeah.
I know. That's gonna be really tough to say to them, though.
Yeah.
I know, and usually summers are, are busy times, so Stephanie's been working on, our summer reading typically is done in person, and we have sheets that people check things off, so we are buying, so an online component, so parents can track what their kids are doing online instead of doing a sheet in case they don't wanna come into the building. And usually, we have a treasure chest that the kids dig through and pick out what prize they want, so we're not doing that this year.
You won't be able to do a lot of stuff. No kickoff, no one else fun.
No, no ice, giant ice cream party with the bouncing house.
No. I thought I had such fun doing the ice cream.
I know, poor Sophia.
I know, right, she had some too.
I may have my own personal ice cream party, though.
There you go, why not?
I mean, maybe we'll do one in the fall.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
But, I mean, we're not gonna do major programming for a long time.
Right, right.
And that's, you know, we're gonna have to weigh that every kind of trustees meeting, what programs can happen and what can't.
Yeah, yeah. And try and do as much on Zoom, I guess, are people gonna be doing that, right?
Right, yeah. And Mary said, like, for her, I guess they were really discouraged from doing Zoom for her book club, and now enough of them have had to do it, like, to wish people happy birthday and whatnot, but she said, I think they're gonna come along to that, so... Thankfully, they take a break for the summer anyways, so... It's okay, and I think having this remote capability for some participants might be how they wanna participate in book clubs, so that's okay.
Yeah, it's a lot of questions, a lot of stuff.
And for those who don't wanna go out, it's another great avenue.
Right, wear your jammies. Go to book club, watch an author talk.
Yep. Dry stuff that you'll be able to do, for sure. All right, what else you have, Ms. Marcy, anything?
So, I think that covers most of my questions for reopening. The only thing that's kind of on here that I wanted to talk to you guys about is when museums open, our museum passes are only for residents except for day-of use. I think the coupon ones just don't get enough use, that I think we should... Um, I think the coupon ones just don't get enough use, that I think we should consider letting non-residents use them. I just got an email that, um, the Ediville's not opening for the season.
Oh, oh, it isn't, wow.
Um, they are hoping to open for Christmas.
Wow. Wow, that's gonna be a biggie.
Right, and they had already, I think they're, they had changed, like, that there's only two and blah, 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 so...
Yeah, they changed their fee schedule and their passes and all kinds of stuff, yeah, yeah.
Right, so...
I, I mean, I don't have a problem with non-residents, I think that's fine, you, I think you do what you think is best.
Okay.
Does anybody have any issues with that?
Nope. Well, Whitman residents would always be a priority and you don't want...
Absolutely.
...to be unused.
Yeah.
Right.
If you've got passes that day and somebody wants it from another town, they can use it.
Right.
The way you do it, yeah, cool, that's cool.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Also, I was, um, we've been talking about not locally protecting some of our materials. At this point, it's a non-issue, 'cause there's no delivery in the state, but, um, once we do have delivery, Whitman patrons would always have top priority. They would always get their holds filled first. It may mean that there's just a little less of a browsing collection, but even if someone from Milton has it checked out and someone from Whitman places a hold on it, as soon as the Milton person returns it, it would hit the Whitman person next. It's not gonna stay in Milton.
Yeah, of course, a lot of this is placated on when we will have delivery again, which I think is gonna be quite a long time.
Yeah, 'cause they are, they're not, they're not an essential business and unlike a lot of other things, I didn't see, like, book delivery listed in the list of businesses, so...
No, no.
And they had been playing, paying all their employees, which I thought was very impressive.
Yep. Me too, I think that's great, so...
So, getting back to the curbside pickup, that's gonna be notified to the public through their, the website?
Yeah, through website, Facebook, phone calls. So we had, we had started calling all the patrons yesterday of everything that's been on the hold shelf since March and just said, you know, "If you wanna come and get these things, we're hoping to start next week." We're, you know, waiting for trustees and the board of health for approval, so...
Okay.
If you don't want these things anymore, we'll send them back.
Oh, all right.
Are you gonna send out an, um...
I think we're gonna send out an email to, to the, everyone and, that has given us an email.
I lost the connection again, guys, sorry. Um, Marcy, are you gonna send an OCLN email?
Yes, like, we're gonna do that.
Okay, good. Okay, what else?
I think that's pretty much it. Um, don't forget town meeting, June 22nd, it's going to be at the high school. They had thought maybe the auditorium, but now I think they're thinking the gym to socially distance safer.
Okay.
As many of you are that are willing, able...
Okay.
Are always welcome and appreciated. I think they only have to meet the quorum of fifty?
Yeah, fifty.
Fifty.
Yeah, so our next meeting is the 17th.
Yep.
So we'll get to meet before town meeting in case there's anything we need to know about.
Um, and we can see about maybe meeting in person unless you guys prefer this and sending, you know, the state what they say.
Yeah, I'd like to meet in person if we can.
Yeah.
Me too.
Like, especially if we're gonna meet at town meeting.
Exactly, and if we, we can meet at the library six feet, six feet apart, I think we can do that, we're all adults, so...
Yeah.
Unless somebody said absolutely no, I think, um, I think we can do that.
Well, and if, you know, Ann doesn't feel comfortable, we can, we can zoom her in.
Right.
Not very comfortable meeting in face-to-face.
There you go, good. But I think that would be awesome.
And I assume Roberta would prefer face-to-face.
Correct.
Yeah.
I would assume so too.
So unless something goes sideways, we'll plan for a face-to-face meeting for the June meeting.
Awesome.
Great.
Forever, cool. All right, does anybody have anything else they need to ask Marcy?
Nope.
Nope. No, you covered everything very well, thank you, Marcy.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Take care.
See you next month.
Yeah, we will, thanks. Marcy, I'll see you on Friday, Friday morning.
Yep, yeah, Friday.
I'll be there a little before, a little before ten, I'll come to the front door.
Yep.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye. Bye, everybody.
Bye, bye, thank you.
Thanks.